Order. Yeah, recording is going. Okay, I would like to officially call our October 5th meeting to order and begin with a roll call vote.
Corey Evans here.
Jeanne Haley Dipold's here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Carrie Thompson here, and let me read the meeting language. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on this Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by me. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant and all votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hand on Zoom and at my discretion will be promoted into the meeting. They must provide their full name and address for our public record. Please note that comments on Facebook will not be monitored and the meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. And we don't have anyone here to do the pledge tonight, but I brought a flag. I'm not sure if Jack's gonna make it. He usually adds a flag too, but I have a flag. So anyone who would like to join us and participate in the pledge of allegiance, please stand. Here's our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Justice for all. All right. I'm watching to see if there is any member of the public who would like to come make a public comment. I can be watching for a hand. If we see anyone. All right, seeing none, let's move on to our first agenda item, which is exciting precinct redistricting. And Kim, we would like to welcome you to your first official meeting as our clerk. Welcome.
Well, thank you so much.
We are honored to have you and thank you so much for all the work you've done transitioning into this role with Carol and we're just so glad to have you and.
I'm so excited to be part of the Cohasset family. Thank you so very much.
Yay. So I believe we need to officially take a vote on this, but I'll let you give us an update real quick on the issue.
I know Jason has done the lion's share of the work, so I'm gonna sort of have him just sort of go in and explain it. But basically, you know, this has been blessed by the Commonwealth, it's been blessed by town's attorney. And it's something that the town needs to complete before the deadline. So Jason, do you want to take it over?
Hi, Jason.
I'll just leave it at that unless people have any questions.
And just a reminder for the public watching from who didn't listen to last meeting, this is based on our town census and the state controls it. So we're moving from two precincts to three. And we will be informing everyone in town if they are part of the new precinct three. And then the reconfigured precinct two as well. So little bit of change, but not too big of a deal. Does anyone else have any questions about this? Okay. Hold on, I believe I have some.
Yeah, there's an official vote that you have to, the wording has to be.
Pulling it up right now. All right. So the official language here I will read. We, the undersigned hereby certify that at a meeting held on October 5th, 2021, the select board voted to accept as presented by the town clerk, the 2020 reprecincting plan for the town of Cohasset.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley Dipold, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right, Jason and Kim, thank you for your help on that.
Thank you so much. Have a great night. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yay, Cohasset's getting big. We got three precincts now.
Thank you, Jason.
All right, moving on to a couple licenses and permits here. The first one is for the Thanksgiving Road Race to be held on November 25th. And I believe Ted's coming in. Hi Ted.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you? Thank you for joining. So I know we've experienced this event before as a town, but give us a little update. Are there any changes? What's going on?
No changes, just glad we're having it back after last year's missing the virtual we did last year. But the only change we're gonna do this year is we're gonna avoid the town hall. We're gonna keep it shut down. So we're gonna, we're gonna get porta potties for the back of the town hall just for the day. And just do all, hopefully, we had a cold 18, a wet 19, and so I'm hoping for, we're due for a good one. So we're gonna be outside with, we'll pop up a few tents for the staff. But yeah, nothing changing except for just staying out of the town hall, so.
You deserve good weather for this one.
Definitely.
Corey, I see your hand.
Yeah, I was just gonna thank you for hosting such a great event and yeah, please ensure that it's not as cold as it was. It was ridiculous. Not to have to do that again, but maybe that's not quite our department.
Runners like cooler temps.
Yeah, this was like, I think it was 12 or 13. It was crazy. This is, this is not fun.
I will say that the, I think 19 with the rain was actually, I thought the rain was when you're out there for three or four hours.
That is bad.
I felt 18 was not as bad as 19, I thought, so. For three hours, so.
If you're wet, yeah, I mean, I, running and then going home is, isn't too bad.
It really is nice to be able to start approving events again, especially events like this one. So thank you for all your work on this. Any other questions for Ted?
No, I'm happy, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the Thanksgiving Road Race sponsored by Cohasset Recreation on November 25th, 2021.
We have a second, we have a second. All right, roll call vote, starting with Corey.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley Dipold, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Thank you Ted, we're excited for the race.
Thank you.
Thanks Ted.
All right, and I believe we have Ann coming in and Madden for our next event, which is the Carriage House Nursery School Halloween Fair to be held on October 24th.
Just, just a correction, I believe it's the South Shore Community Center Nursery School.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Hi, Ann, I'm glad you're in here.
Ann taught my kids 100 years ago, so.
That's so cute. All right, Ann, is there any details you want to give us? I know we have the info in our packet, but anything else you want to add to it? I thought she was here, I'm not sure.
She's muted.
Unmute, here I am.
Hi, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, all right. I'm very happy to ask to use the common again. This is, you know, after last year it was sad not to be able to use it. The Halloween fair is for, we use the funds to fund our scholarship, which is, which over for the past 40 years, we've raised about $30,000. So it's a big deal for our school. It's just for two, three, four and five year olds. You know, it's just, it's really a happy event. And we are happy if we respectfully ask to use the common again this year, if that's possible.
And that's an impressive amount of money and we thank you for doing that. Are there any questions for Ann about use of the common or this event?
Are there prizes?
No.
What question?
Categories.
Every kid's a winner.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Especially at the community center.
I'll move the annual Halloween fair for the South Shore Community Center for Sunday, October 24th. It'll be on the common from 12 to 5:00 PM.
All right, is there a second?
I would second with, I'll second and then I have a little, little point I want to add.
All right, go ahead, Jean.
I have been a participant in the Arlington, Abington, a dog Halloween costume, which is competitive and does prizes. So just want to put in a plug in for that in case you're considering some expansion because it's a big hit.
Oh, that's not a, that's a really good idea. Thank you.
The kids dress up the dogs.
Yeah.
So cute.
I know. That's a good idea.
We would definitely have to dress up our town hall dog Casey too in that.
Oh, that's right.
Well, and you could partner with the Cohasset Working Dog Foundation, which had the parade in costume dogs last weekend, last week at the farmer's market. So nice symbiosis there in the future.
Yeah, that's a good idea though. Yeah.
Great idea, Jean.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we can vote. Go ahead, Corey.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Harry Dipold, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Thank you, Ann, for all your hard work.
Great, thank you very much. Have a good night.
We appreciate it. All right, it just feels so good to have events again. I love approving them. All right, we do have a couple committee appointments tonight. The first one is for the School Facilities Committee. We had filled this, but one of our members, Alethea, got called to go work in DC, so she had to submit her resignation before she really even got to start. But I have very good news, we have someone else interested who was interviewed before, and I know that you all remember her, Jen Leskey. I think that her skill set is fantastic. I know all of you know her and I think that she'd be a great fit. She also is willing and excited to serve. If the board agrees and is okay with that. Corey and Diane.
Yeah, I'm just looking over my notes from the interviews and then our discussion and yeah, I mean Jen was, I think, right up there with the other people we had, we had mentioned multiple times. You know, as a Cohasset Education Foundation member, she understands a lot of what the schools need. She's, you know, she has experience in the school. She's got, she, you know, knows how to work grants. I mean, there's a lot of skill sets that I think Jen, we'd be blessed to have her, so.
Thank you, Corey. Yeah, her name was mentioned back when we were taking our initial vote, so she was up there and I think we all agreed her skill set was really good. Diane and then Jean.
I was literally gonna basically say the same thing, just that as a teacher and somebody that has fundraising experience and I think she's really gonna be an asset to that committee, so.
Thank you, Jean. But you're muted, yeah.
I've got nothing to add, other than I recognize a lot of other people also applied who have really strong, great skill sets. And so it is always a hard decision because we did have so many great candidates, so just wanted to leave it at that.
No, it is. And all those people that did apply were hoping to get you involved in other ways too. There's a lot of talent needed in other areas and I think there are a lot of talents that could be given to those other areas. So that's a really good point. All right, I will entertain a motion for Jen.
I've moved to appoint Jen Leskey to the School Facilities Committee.
Second.
All right, moving second in, any discussion? Great, roll call vote, starting with Corey.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Harry Dipold, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right. Moving on to a couple harbor committee appointments, and I believe both these applications are also all set to Chris. Tracy confirmed that with me. So we have George Baumgarten and Mark, Mike Sardina, who are interested in being on the Harbor Committee and Tim Davis recommends both of them as the Harbor Committee Chair to fill those two slots. Any comments or discussion on that?
Just, I believe both are currently on the implementation or the infrastructure committee for the Cohasset Harbor. So this is just putting them onto the full Harbor Committee.
Yep, thanks for clarifying, Diane, that's correct. All right.
Want a motion?
A motion, yes.
Yeah, I move that we appoint George Baumgarten. Let me just clarify the terms. Are they full three-year terms or are they fulfilling?
I.
Expired terms?
I thought they were full terms, but Chris.
Oh, my year sheet on me, I usually do, sorry.
Yeah, I should have looked it up ahead of time. Didn't, sorry.
Tracy's just double checking.
Okay, thanks.
I know that one of the terms did expire because it's the person who was in this, didn't ask for reappointment.
Okay.
I'm not sure about the other one.
Well, I'll start.
So one is, one is a full three-year term. What's the other one, Tracy? They're both three-year terms.
Okay, okay.
So I, and it would be three years, first year would be 22, 23, 24. So I would like to move to appoint George Baumgarten and Mike Sardina to three-year terms expiring in 2024 to the Cohasset Harbor Committee.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley Dipold, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Congratulations to you both and thank you for continuing to serve. All right, moving on to the ratification of the SEIU. Chris, give us an update on this.
So as I, five, this is the sixth of our seventh, seven union have agreed to the one-year 2%. A little bit longer, we had some things that had, we had to talk through. So this, all this is, is it's a, it's a one-year 2%. It's a continuation of the current terms with a one-year 2% for this year, this fiscal year. And then we have some side table conversations about how vacations calculated, but that's something we're kind of, we're continuing to negotiate. So this is the same as all the other five.
Okay.
So I recommend that you approve it. Any questions at all?
How does the 2% increase, and this is just a general question compared to other towns?
It's right, it's right in line. We try to, we try to benchmark as well. Most communities are at two, there's some that have been zero, it's track communities that were particularly hard hit by the pandemic. But most communities are getting in around two right now.
Thanks.
All right. Does this motion have to have specific language? I'm trying to check the packet real quick.
Basically, it's the board a vote to approve the MOU between the Town of Cohasset and the Cohasset Clerical Association.
Okay. All right, does someone want to rephrase that?
I'll make the motion that the select board approves the memorandum of understanding by and between the Town of Cohasset and the Cohasset Clerical Association, SEIU Local 888.
I'd second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Corey.
I was just gonna say that, you know, being able to do, having the flexibility of being able to do a one-year kind of, you know, interim deal here is really helpful. So just want to obviously thank all the people that work under this contract for just, you know, continuing to be part of town and, you know, just, you know, giving us their time and energy. So that's all I have to say about that.
Well said. All right. No more discussion, we can vote.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley Dipold, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right, that's exciting. Now to the captain's walk update and vote, Chris.
Okay, so the, the town approved, because of the tight budgets, last two years, we pulled consulting out of the budget, we put into separate articles. And I said that I would come back to the board if we were gonna tap it for anything. And the captain's walk, we've talked about as well. So in this case, after Lauren's down here, Lauren went and did some research in the plane department and we have a contract with Kavanaugh Consulting to do some mapping and some topographical analysis of the parcels that basically runs from the government island all the way into the out club. And this would be information that would be incredibly useful and helpful for this project as a baseline, so we know exactly what we're doing, where we're going. It'd also be useful for other things as well. And it's just shy of $15,000. There is money available. Lauren has confirmed with Don that we have money in the 2020 article. It's still remaining. We're gonna close that out. Will be taken out of this year's appropriation to town meeting.
Okay.
And again, I don't, I don't necessarily need you to, I mean, you don't have to vote it. I bring it, raising it with you if you have any objections or concerns. But again, I think this fulfills the, the, the goal. The board has said, hey, let's get the captain's one. And I just, I just, this is more of an update. I mean, you can vote it if you want. I just, I don't think it's necessary to. But I mostly just want to make sure that you're all up to date on this and if there's any questions, we can answer. I know that Lauren's answered some questions for some folks on this historical society this week, so they're fully on board, so. But this is all practical stuff.
We know how important this area is to the town. It's a very special place. I know a lot of citizens want to get this done. So thank you, Lauren and Chris, for your help on this. Diane, I see your hand.
I think I'm gonna make a statement that might lead to a question if I'm incorrect, but this really seems to be, especially the captain's walk, a culmination of, you know, our historical commissioned efforts, you know, village revitalization, linking to the harbor. So it has some L Street corridor and obviously the, the work that's being done around the harbor. So I assume, given Lauren's lead in this, that that is kind of bringing all of those parties together on this.
Just add, thank you, hi everyone. Good to see you. This is just another piece of information that we can use for a series of others. It's a building block for potential future captains walk improvements as well as, you know, infrastructure improvements in the area. And we've had Kavanaugh Consulting do similar survey work actually along the Elm Street corridor and in similar areas of the harbor. So this is just adding to that picture of information that we have.
Okay, yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Other questions? I mean, I would be okay taking a vote if the rest of the board wants one, Chris. I mean, do we?
That's fine. I, I, I probably, you know, as part of the ratification of these articles, I said I would come back with it to make sure that everyone's good with what we're doing before we. So if you want to vote to support this, that's great. And then it's in the permanent record and I'll sign the contract tomorrow and Lauren can then give Cameron a agreement.
Is the board comfortable doing a vote to support?
Absolutely, I am.
Yeah, go ahead. You just muted yourself, Diane.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know how I did that. I wasn't even touching my.
It always happens, I know.
I like, I must expel breath too much. Move that we approve the consulting project relating to the captain's walk.
Do we have a second? Whoa, we might not have a second.
I'd like to hear further details, including.
Okay, so I actually just see, hold on, I see Tim Davis is here asking to comment, but I'm trying to promote him and it's not working. Can someone? Let me try again. Hold on, Tim, we're trying to let you talk. Tim, can you hear us? Tim, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
Hi.
Few other buttons to click here. Let's see, start my video. Let's see if that, there we go, okay. All right, thank you. First of all, let me thank you all for your support of the activities of the Harbor Committee and the Infrastructure Planning Working Group that have been ongoing. We are at the beginning of what I believe is a Renaissance in the Cohasset Harbor. This will go on for a number of years. And I've said before that we will likely invest between public, private and nonprofit organizations between 50 and 100 million dollars in Cohasset Harbor over the next 10 years. There's a lot of work to be done. It really will take the cooperation of all of the community to, to accomplish this. Not only the, the owners, and I put owners in quotations because there are public and private owners around the harbor, but it'll take the cooperation of the Cohasset municipal community, the select board, the town administration and all to get this done. We do have a terrific group of people that are working on this. The, the town has provided the services of a number of employees to work with the Harbor Committee and the chip to get this done. Michelle Larry, Lauren Lind, Brianna has recently joined us and all the others. So it's been a, it's been a great group effort. Not without its hurdles along the way, but, but we're all enthusiastic about working hard to do this. The the vote that you just took will provide funding to do one small step for mankind to kind of take a look at what is, what is extent in the harbor, what, what really, who owns what and where the, where the survey takes us. And that's important. And I, I don't know if, if you voted to approve all three of the tasks on the contract, but I hope you did. Chris, maybe you can confirm that. Did they just vote to do all three tasks?
We haven't even voted yet.
Oh, you haven't voted yet?
Yeah, we're in the middle of a motion, so don't worry.
You would vote for all three tasks because that's really just the beginning of seeing where we, where we stand today. But from that, then a lot can come from that. And there's, there's a lot that has to be done once we have that. So anyway, I'd just like to thank you all for your, for your efforts. What we will end up, I think, with is access for all of the community to the harbor, which is just a jewel. And I think if we're successful in doing what we are proposing to do, we will end up with one of the most wonderful harbors in Massachusetts. So thank you for your efforts and thank you for your support as we move forward.
Thank you, Tim, and maybe stay in here. I do see Diane had her hand up and then Corey, so, and now Chris as well.
Chris, do you want me to share? I could quickly just show you the, you know, if that makes it any easier.
I just wanted to say in making the motion, you know, if anything, it's superfluous because Chris has the authority to do this and town meeting appropriated the funds. But, you know, just in terms of expressing our support behind it was, was the reason behind my making that motion. I also want to just correct something that I said earlier, which is, I mentioned the historical society. It would be the Historical Commission, which is a body of, of the town and, and not an independent nonprofit.
Thank you, Diane. Jackie would appreciate you.
Yeah, I, the minute it came out of my mouth, I was like, I didn't want to untangle it.
We knew what you meant, but good to clarify. And I agree, this obviously is ongoing and can change as we go, but I do echo Tim's sentiments here. I think it is really important that we support it. Corey.
I just a question for clarification for Chris. Was this appropriated in the 2022 budget or the 2021 budget?
It's actually in a 2020 article.
20, okay.
Yeah, 2021 article. So we had leftover money from 2020. This was in a warrant article, not in the budget per se.
Okay.
It's all, we didn't use it all. So we're gonna drink, we'll finish that first.
Yeah.
Money will come out of the 2021 article and.
So, and just as a matter of, you know, I understand, you know, my colleagues' point on the fact that this was appropriated. I was just going to suggest a rewording of the motion to kind of reflect that. And if a chair, I can either do a motion to correct or we can withdraw.
So I'll withdraw and I'll withdraw my motion and then Corey, if you want to make a new one.
Go for it, Corey.
Okay, yeah, I would move that we reaffirm the appropriation of this funding, funding originally appropriated in 2020 and 2021 town meeting for the purposes of bringing on a consultant in order to develop a plan for the captain's walk around Cohasset Harbor.
Good work, I'll second that.
Yeah, that was a good one. All right, we have a.
Despite the hat.
I, I can barely look at you, Corey. But it was a good motion.
I'm getting hate mail.
No pets.
Yeah. All right. Roll call vote or any further discussion? Yeah.
Question, and maybe, Tim, this is a question for you, is, and forgive my ignorance here. Is the purpose of this survey to determine what we own and what we don't own, you know, as we plan out the captain's walk?
Well, I saw, I saw something quickly in the contract about that and I just wanted to.
I mean, it's, that generally is, is what we're trying to do is to understand what is there, but there, it's, it gets into fine detail and I I refer you to the, the contract that the Kavanaugh, but that generally is what it is. There are, what's interesting around the harbor. And this is true, I think, throughout the rest of Cohasset, but the, what is generally identified is the public right of way. Is, does, does not include all of the right of way. And there are many property owners that have, I will use the term usurp perhaps unadvisably, but their lawns go over the public right of way. So what we really want to do is find out what the town really has access to and then we can. And then we can determine where we go from there.
All right. Thank you, Tim.
Did distribute it to you. You should all have it in your inbox. I apologize for saying that earlier. So you have it. If you have any questions, just give Lauren a call or a vehicle.
Jean, does that answer your question enough or?
Yeah, I was just trying to follow up. Plan language it a little bit.
All right. If there's no further discussion, let's move to a roll call vote.
Cory Evans has to find the unmute button and I.
Jean Haley Dipple, Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Thank you, Tim and Lauren and Chris and everyone who's been helping with this. All right.
Thank you.
Our next item, which Lauren, you can stay for obviously is our. A hundred twenty four Elm Street easements and discussing and voting on that.
So this is just procedure. So this, this to the planning board, they did review it with council. They were happy with it. I, I think you've been sent the memo of the. Lauren's here if you have any questions. So the planning board was comfortable within the, the, the language. KP has reviewed it as well. They're comfortable with the language. And I think. If you have any other questions, Lauren is here, but I, there's nothing really new otherwise.
Are we being asked to vote on just one out of three easements right now? Or is this just an update?
Well, they're on, if you want, they're ready to vote. I mean, this, it's just the first, it's just the, the, the. The, it's ready. And again, again, why, why don't I have, rather than jump, I want to have Lauren give the, the more technical aspect, whether they.
Hello again, everyone. So this is just tonight, we're just talking about the easement. That's adjacent to the town veterans parking lot, that reciprocal area where they, you know, the jagged property line that we referenced. The view easement and the public park chapter ninety one amenity area easement are. The board, the planning board did not make a recommendation on those two yet as it was understood. That there was still some discussion with council about those two, but they did look at the, the other first easement that I referenced and were in agreement with that.
Okay. Uh, Jean and then Diane.
I don't know if we're ready to have a discussion on the merits of whether to approve this easement at this juncture. My strong preference, and I'm happy to outline why, would be to wait until all the easements are finalized. So we can look at the entire package because I do think this is a package deal and carving out one easement at a time is incredibly. Detrimental to the town's interests.
And do we know why the planning board, did they only have time to do one? Did they choose to just do the one? I don't know if it was a time issue or.
Sorry, I was searching through my inbox for the map, but I, I can show you the map in a moment. But also the, it was my understanding that the board had only been requested to look at that one. I think the view easement was prepared, but there's a couple of members who wanted a little bit more detail about that. The view easement I will also reference is sort of part of the, it is part of the zoning. So that is going to be a protected piece, no matter what. Same actually goes for the, the public space amenity area because it is part of the site plan and special permit approval. So if they were to deviate from that, it'd be a major modification to that and they would have to return to, to repermit the process. So just rest assured that there is some other systems of checks and balances to make sure that all of these easements do shape up. That the way the town will be satisfied. But then let me, with that, I'm just going to share just for, oh. If someone could just grant me the ability to screen share, I will show you the map that we're referencing.
Uh, hold on, let me try to fix that.
Thank you.
All right, try it now. It should work for you.
Okay, let's see. All right. So I'm here, it's rather small. I'll zoom in here. You'll see margin straight up to the, the top of the map. And then this is the, a very zoomed in area of one twenty four Elm Street hugging the harbor. So the easement that the board, the planning board recommended to move forward with, which was the initial, also similar. Visual depicted for the twenty twenty annual town meeting vote about reciprocal easements was this location here. And that is to allow, well, one half of the parking lot that's currently considered a public lot is actually on the private property. So this would allow access to the spaces as if all of the lot was to be public because right now it's really only half. And then it grants the easement so that they could cross over town property to enter. This designated access portion of their site. And then there's some area for landscaping as well. So that's the gist of these easements.
Okay. That visual helps. Thank you for explaining that, Lauren. All right. Several hands, Diane, I saw yours first and then Cory's, then Jean's.
Yeah, I just, I mean, this, for me, this easement is something that I am ready, willing and able. To cross off the list. This is something that went before town meeting. It's actually a reciprocation of. You know, it's, it's, there's town property on private land as Lauren just described, et cetera. And this was something that was vetted and discussed and voted on by town meeting as, as something that needed to get clarified and cleaned up. And there was, there was discussion about whether it made sense before the planning board process, the permitting process or. Or after, I think this is to me is just something that we've had enough discussion about. The town has weighed in on it. And I would like to see this kind of get clarified. The other two are, are, are really conditions that are within the planning board's permitting decisions. And I, I agree that, you know, those can wait to, till we have everything back from, from the state, et cetera. So I, I would be very comfortable moving forward with this tonight.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Cory.
I, I mean, I guess I'll largely echo what my, my colleague just said. You know, this is an easement that had restrictions on it that was placed on us by town meeting. The town did vote on it. Yeah, we've been advised by council that this is in line with, with the restrictions and the, and the structure that was given to us. I do, you know, the planning board has voted to recommend it as a bargaining, the bargaining piece. It's really not like there's something else we need and we'd be dangling this as some sort of leverage. It really, that's not, wouldn't be a function of this easement. So I'm also very comfortable moving this forward as kind of a matter of procedure.
Thank you, Cory. And for the record, I agree too. I don't think that we need to wait on the other two to get this one approved, especially because it's gone through council and town meeting. And now planning board. Jean, I think you disagree. So do you want to share why you? Are uncomfortable or give us your.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a question of whether we can do this. I think it's clear we can do this based on what town meeting has allowed us to do. I think the question is whether it's prudent to do this because. Notwithstanding the fact that we have two other easements we're still negotiating, which are incredibly important, including to those neighborhoods. The view easement and the public access easement, which is not agreed to, which is a source of debate. Notwithstanding that it's a permit condition and that's something that our town residents really care about. It's clear that the developer. Cares about this easement because it provides the access into the building for him to build. And he needs that easement. So again, as a, you know, fiduciary of the town. I, I want to make sure the town gets what it needs and we think we need the easement, notwithstanding. That it's a good idea to have these easements, notwithstanding the fact that the planning board's permitting decision already requires it. Indeed, if you are, you know, a landlord, you, you want easements in the registry of deeds and I want the town to have that protection too. So I do think it's a wise course that we're on to get these easements to ensure we have. Those conditions spelled out and legally recorded for our protection. So that way we don't have to hire surveyors to continue to figure out what we own and don't own. Along, you know, this, this harbor that is so important to us. So I just want people to understand the big picture. Of what's out there when we look at the overall deal and the negotiating push and pull. And, and the fact that we frankly, you know, understand that there's no delay in waiting. I think there's only downside in a negotiation to giving something to someone that they want right now. When we still have something we want that we haven't been given.
Okay. I was trying to see if Tom Callahan wanted to come in to chat about this. I, you might have just declined it though, Tom. You were making comments. Saying, let's see. He said the parking area easement.
He is in, sorry.
Yeah. Tom, do you?
Just one more. Process. I mean, you know, I appreciate Tom's viewpoint as a member of the planning board. But you know, he, I don't believe is the chair. I, I don't think he would, you know, I'm just a little bit uncomfortable with. You know, he can speak to it as a resident, but I don't, you know, I'm not quite sure. Outside of that, if he really kind of has an appropriate place in what we're talking about right now. That's just my, my thoughts on that matter.
Okay. I, I mean, I was, I was fine with letting him talk just to clarify what happened at the planning board meeting, but we don't have to do that. I will say, I think that these easements, I mean, they all needed to be, need to be voted on separately. They're not coming as a package deal in terms of the voting procedures. So Jean, I totally respect what you're saying, but we still have to vote on each one individually and. I'm still fine with moving ahead on this one because they're not inextricably intertwined with the, you know. I think we can get this one done, in my opinion.
I'm comfortable making a motion. That the board approves. How do I phrase this? The proposed easement plan for reciprocal easements in the vicinity of the parking lot adjacent to Veterans Memorial Park. At the sites of one twenty four Elm Street and Border Street as laid out in the plan as presented to the board. Is that appropriate?
Yes, we have a motion in a second. All right. Any further discussion on this? All right. Roll call vote, starting with Cory.
Cory Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple, nay, for the reasons stated previously.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right. Thank you for that discussion, everyone. All right. Moving on to the Norfolk County update. That gee, I believe Jean and Diane attended either all of this meeting or part of this meeting and I heard it was a real barn burner. So Jean, why don't you start?
Um, so Norfolk County Advisory Board had a meeting on September twenty ninth. Just so folks know, we are part of Norfolk County. We do have an advisory board which Cohasset has a seat at. And the advisory board's role is to advise on the budget for Norfolk County. And at the end of the day, the Norfolk County Advisory Board has to approve the budget for it to come into effect. And so that appears to be one of the primary roles of the Norfolk County Advisory Board. And you might say, well, what does Norfolk County like actually do? So again, just like a quick primer on that. They, Norfolk County has our registry of deeds, which is incredibly important and the foundation of our property law system. We also have multiple courts within Norfolk County, including Rentham, Quincy, Dedham. Those are run however by the state with. In terms of the operations, but the land itself is owned by Norfolk County. There's a Wallaston Golf Course. Owned by Norfolk County FYI for people who like to golf. It is a public golf course. And there's also an agricultural school, a public school. For Norfolk County, again, for, you know, people who might be interested. That is a agricultural school as well. So there's, you know, a few things like that out there and this may be obvious to many, but I'm just putting it out there because it pertains to what we're about to talk to. Talk about. Probably most important to Cohasset right now is that it is the recipient of the hundred and thirty seven million dollars. In federal funds from the American Rescue Act plan. And it will be the entity that is essentially dispersing and controlling the funds, including for Cohasset. So right now Cohasset is slated to get two point four million dollars. Those funds have to be used within the. Parameters of the statute and treasury's guidance surrounding the statute. The county has joined in with three other counties to create a portal system. That is going to be run by two CPAs, two CPA firms, as well as Mince Lemon, which is a big law firm in Boston. Who is creating the legal infrastructure and agreements surrounding it, including ones that Cohasset will likely be asked to join. They are going to be doing the auditing and the reporting work as well for the applicable cities and towns that are part of this. And so right now the portal is being beta tested. There's going to be another town hall pretty soon and. At the end of the day, it should be coming out mid-Octoberish. I'm assuming that, you know, that the testing goes well. At which point it'll be ready for applications and Norfolk County's preference is that applications aren't all coming from the towns all at once. I think in terms of how they're getting the tranches of money. That said, if there was a particular town and there is one particular town that wants to spend the entire amount upfront. That's something we need to talk about with them. But for Cohasset, I don't think that's necessarily going to be the case. What we have to do is spend the money within three years. And so. It's still a little incoate in terms of what exactly is happening, but it feels like there's movement, which is good. And it, and it appears to that, again, we're not going to have to compete against each other for those funds, which is also good. Considering, you know, Cohasset's relatively small in the grand scheme of Norfolk County. So that was probably the most relevant update with respect to Norfolk County that came out of the advisory board meeting. Then, you know, other just quick updates trying to keep quickly on schedule. Norfolk County has a five million dollar surplus. And they are, well, four point seven to be precise. They are proposing to do a variety of things with that money, including considering spending some on the agricultural school. I just discussed, I'm spending some on maintenance of the district court facilities. They are moving a million over into a stabilization account, i.e. reserves. They're, they're at fifteen percent right now of reserves. They're trying to get to twenty. They are also investing a million dollars in the Wallaston Golf Course, or so is their aspiration. So again. Golfers. And then they, they also have, a, a, and so they have a variety of uses that they're, they're looking at. For the surplus. One, one important part, one important thing that's coming up is the Quincy District Court is going to be sold to the state. Which is a lot of money. The plans are to make it into a regional justice center. The question is, what's going to happen to all that money? That's now going to come into Norfolk County on top of an existing five million dollar surplus. That is being, you know, there's some, I think a struggle on how to spend that much money. A little bit, I sort of, maybe struggle is a wrong word for it, but. That I think is something that Cohasset, you know, needs to really sort of keep focused on. That's not going to be an overnight process. They're going through assessments and appraisals with the state right now. You know, could be year, a few years, but in any event, you know, that's something that's out there too that we need to think about. And they also have OPEB liability to, the fifty five million, you know, PEB liability that they could use to knock out. And then the last update real quickly was. I'm not going to go into this in depth, but anyone can call me if they want to talk about it more. There is sort of an ongoing lawsuit with respect to the registry of deeds and his desire for a permanent CIO. As compared to the Norfolk County's approach right now, which is to give him an interim CIO. Until they're finished doing an assessment that I understand is going to come out the door about their technology needs. I don't think it really affects Cohasset in terms of those, that technology assessment. Certainly it would affect Cohasset if the registry of deeds suffered from a technological issue. Because all of.
Right.
Cohasset is loaded into there. But so there were some back and forth about allocating funds, including for that lawsuit. And again, I'm not going to go into it, you know, full blown, but I'm happy to answer more questions if anyone has it, but that's sort of the high level. Assessment of where the money's going, including ARPA and just Norfolk County generally.
All right. Thank you, Jean. And I know a lot of our concerns were that Cohasset would be competing with some of the bigger towns and cities for the ARPA funds. And it really makes me feel a lot better that you're saying that's not going to be a problem now.
That's, that's what it appears and that's consistent with the August meeting as well. So.
Okay. All right, Cory.
Yeah, I guess the question still is, even if it's not, even though we're not competing, but what kind of hoops are we going to have to jump through here? To kind of, you know, and, and, and the lack of, I don't know, clear process is, is certainly frustrating. I laughed earlier just because I've spent a, a lot of time in Quincy court and I just, I don't, that's a terrible building. Yeah, it flashbacks, so.
So Cory, just a quick response about that. I did ask about. So Cory, just a quick response about that. I did ask about reporting requirements. And what was going to be on us and, you know, sort of infrastructure we would have to, or operations we would have to ramp up on our end. And they indicated that the portal was going to try to address those reporting requirements, including helping the towns, you know. Do all the sort of, I think, technological reporting issues. That said, we still might need to. Do a lot more work on our end to actually substantively have the data and report out on it, and so.
We just don't know that yet, though, right? Like, we have to wait to see what the hoops are.
Yeah, it's a whole other set of gatekeepers.
I agree, Cory. I wish we knew what the hoops were going to be, but I feel like we can't even know those yet. There will be hoops, let's just accept it.
Yeah, well, I, I was basically going to say what Jean said. I mean, there, there is, you know, a belief that. This could help us, help the communities administratively. Um, and I think once we know a little more about what, what they're planning to do and what the process has got to be and what. We'll have some. We'll have some reassurances, so, um, but yeah, it's still to be known.
Yeah, keep in mind you have four counties now using this portal, Plymouth, Norfolk, Barnstable. I mean, I think that they're going to have to account for making user-friendly to communities, otherwise they're just going to get a huge amount of pushback from like. All of this southeastern wing of Massachusetts.
Yeah, good point. Alright, any other comments on this? Obviously, you can keep us updated, Jean and Diane, whenever the next meeting is. Or if we hear anything else. Any other comments on Norfolk? Somewhat related to that is our annual select board budget message, and for board members, this was emailed out to you. You should have it in there. And just to clarify for everyone watching, this is something the board does every year in terms of what our budget message is going to be. This is for FY twenty-three. And obviously. We want to keep supporting all of the good things we have going for us as a town with our budget and our quality of services and our infrastructure planning and. Just general strong financial management. So the goals here are, I think, th- they remain stable. Throughout the past years that we've had, meaning that we still want to maintain our strong bond rating. Our steady revenues, our operating budget, the typical benchmarks that we try to support and have happened every year. This budget message in particular, though, does also focus on aggressively pursuing. ARPA opportunities and other pandemic-related opportunities like we were just talking about. In terms of Norfolk County. So I think that's one thing that we don't typically see in, in a lot of years of our budget messages, but this one. Is very much about identifying and pursuing those opportunities. Other things on here, just glancing at it, trying to summarize for people watching. Continuing to support our town's fiscal management overall, maintaining our triple A bond rating and addressing our OPEB obligations. Paying attention to the FY twenty-three operating budget in terms of how to keep supporting at least the equivalent of our town services. Establishing our capital priorities and funding plans, which Chris, our town manager. Will update the ten-year capital plan in terms of how this relates to possible infrastructure and ARPA funds. And also providing support for our, our goals, the select board's goals on planning and communication. And all of our goals that, all of the reasons why that goal is going to need support in terms of infrastructure. That type of thing. So that's a quick summary. Wanted to hear your thoughts on it, and I see all three of your hands. So Cory, I think I saw yours first. Oh, was it Jean? It's so hard to monitor which hands go up first. Alright, Jean, they're saying you.
Um, I, I have a lot of questions, so I guess we'll just start at the top, but I'm just going to do one question at a time to share the air with everyone. Um, so with respect to the towns, so at one, first, first paragraph. Um, with respect to the town's fiscal management and reserve policies. Uh, at the third bullet point, we're saying that reviewing and where needed updating the town's financial policies, I just wanted to put out there. Are we talking about changing any of the town's financial policies? Because if so, I think we need to be, you know, transparent and like above board about that. Because I'm not sure what that means, and I know that we've gotten feedback from advisory about needing to come, actually better comply with them, and so. Um, I'm just trying to manage that tension and figure out what are we actually saying there.
No, that's a valid question, and Chris, you can jump in on this if you want. I was under, oh, go ahead, Chris.
So part of the, the, part of the financial policies, keeping them alive, is that they get reviewed regularly. So a staff looks at them and make sure their, their current, and, and, I mean, and we bring them back periodically. We go through the advisor committee and through this board too. Uh, and if there's things that we need to add or, or update, uh, it could be because the state's changed the rule or something else has changed. So they, they, they're regularly brought back and looked at. Although, so that we, that, that way they, they continue to, to live, right? They're, they're active, they're active in use. For example, um, the, uh, few years back, um, the was, the policy on the uh special stabilization fund changed, we changed the entire. The change of state law, everything changed. Uh, Paul also looks at them periodically to make sure that we're, we're current and up to date uh on guide. So i- i- it's, it's just that kind of a general thing. It, it, we, we need to do, we need to look at them regularly and then bring them back regularly. Um, uh, if there's changes, um, just to make sure they're still current.
And I will say, in looking at message drafts from the past several, several years, Jean, this was a sentence that is continual, that, that is consistently in. The budget messages year after year. So if you think that the sentence can be better clarified. We can do that, but it is a sentence that we always have in the budget message that I found in drafts. Yeah, Diane?
Yeah, and, and, you know, I think that this is really just starting to shape um the, the general expectations. It's not prescriptive, it's more directive for, for Chris and the financial team. Working with the departments, working with advisory to kind of get us to places where there might be tension. And then come back to us. It gives us the ability to revise as we go along. So for example, I know in the advisory. Um, information, you know, a lot of the goals that are set are aspirational. And, and Chris, you're going to, might have to help me get the right, because I don't have the advisory document in front of me, but. You, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily meet that one percent in the reserves every year. But most communities are well below one percent. As the budget grows, one percent is a lot of money to hold on to. Um, you know, for those, those special, if you know, special unforeseen events. Um, and is that money better in the budget? And should that number be point six? And I don't, or a point four or point eight or whatever. And I think it's not until the budget is starting to be developed within kind of the, the. The guidelines that we're giving in the budget message that we begin to realize, you know, to ask ourselves those questions. And for Chris to come back to us with some um recommendations. So that's, that's, like I said, it's sort of more guidance than it is uh prescriptive.
I think that's a good way of putting it. Jean, does that answer the question on that? You, you're.
Boilerplate, but I've also, I also understand that there's, you know, discussion about how to fund some. Varying, if not competing, town priorities, including by changing our town's financial policies. And I think that we need to just be clear about specifically what we're talking about and be transparent about that, including in our budget message. If we are going to start changing our financial policies.
No, I mean, I think that point is valid, but I also don't think that particular bullet point is the place maybe where we would want to do that. Cory.
I guess the point is it's not maybe boilerplate this year.
Okay.
Okay, well, the, the boilerplate words notwithstanding, um, you know, w- we could, and again, you know, considering what, what the town manager just just said, which is, you know. If there are changes, they're brought to the different boards and then they're reviewed. So really, maybe, I mean, I think the verb may be wrong. I mean, updating really isn't, it's recommending updates. Would be, I mean, the, the, the mechanism here, not updating. So, I mean, i- if.
Recommending updates, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, i- if that's, you know, I, I'm not, I, I, I'm, I'm not overly concerned, but I do agree that, you know, hey, having the right verb, there's, there's no harm in that. Uh, overall, though, and I'm excited to, you know, I think this message has a lot of really great things in it. Um, including things we've talked about. I do like that you, we've prioritized figuring out a way to. Make communications part of, of how town hall operates. I think there's a lot of questions in town about a lot of different things. And it needs to be part of our budget. It can't be something that we just do and then walk away from. We have to actively plan. For what is, what is, you know, getting high-quality information to people is something that is resource-intensive and that resource is worth it. So I'm glad we have that in there. I'm also very glad to see uh that we've uh, you know, established or the goal to establish a parallel. Major infrastructure plan. We've talked about, there's a ten-year capital plan that covers, you know, fire trucks and a bunch of stuff you can see, but. We also have a lot of these other discussions, and if we're going to be talking about, you know, obviously what's, what's in front of us right now is town hall, but we have, you know, police and fire. We have DPW, we have other needs that are really bigger, broader, and need to be understood kind of in a different lens. So I think a parallel infrastructure plan is exactly how we need to understand this. That way the town can understand what's coming down the pike and we can make decisions. You're looking out, you know, not just, you know, one or two years, but really a long term. Um, so overall, you know, those are just two things I wanted to uh, to highlight. Obviously, we've got um priorities in here for schools and facilities committee. School Facilities Committee, which I just mentioned. Um, so I think this is, it's a great message. Uh, I think it's got a lot here. Um, you know, a town hall has its work cut out for us, but I think this is, uh, this is our job. Um, and I think it's well done.
Thank you, Cory. And I just want to read too, for people watching, the second bullet of. Uh, this, of number two here, which is support and budget for prioritized recommendations of various study committees, including the harbor. Affordable housing and master plan, town hall building committee, school facilities committee, as they relate to operational needs of the town. We do have a lot going on with all of those, but in this message in particular, I don't feel like we're ready to be recommending more specifics. Jean, I don't know if that's what you were saying in terms of almost ranking, which we are prioritizing more. And I didn't feel like that was the purpose of this message for now, because these are all ongoing projects.
No, I just, I think, you know, there's an, an aspiration to, let's say, address the capital plan by changing the new growth fiscal plan. Which I know is, you know, an idea hovering out there. You know, I think that some more specificity and transparency about if that's something on the table, then, you know, we should just be clear about that.
Okay, so.
But maybe we're not at that point, I, and I don't think.
Again, I, I take responsibility for this draft, but I just felt like we weren't there yet in terms of specificity. Personally, I'm willing to have that discussion if we want to add more specificity, but I also don't want to hurt us by adding specificity that ends up being incorrect. So I guess I'm, I, I'm not sure how to.
I'm sure as long as we.
Yeah.
We're not there yet and we haven't made those decisions, I'm content with that, because I do think it should be made in like a more, you know, like a very considered way. Um, but I do think that, you know, we have a lot going on at three, and so. To the extent that that bullet at one was meant to incident, you know, lead to more than was. You know, being stated, then I, I think we need it to outline that.
Alright, Diane?
Yeah, I, I, um. Yeah, I don't think this is, again, any decisions are coming out of this. This is, this is a framework. I, I actually think, Carrie, this is probably one of the best budget messages we've had. And when we originally started doing it, um, you know, we, we did a lot of um benchmarking against other towns and seeing, you know, the ones that are really fiscally responsible. What, what do they include? And a- again, it's really an impressionistic kind of approach. I, I see advisory doing the kind of work Jean was talking about and, 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 you know, how, how do we do the split? And, and, and new growth, and how does that all work? Those are, those are mechanisms that play out as we go forward. Um, and start asking these questions. I think the most important takeaways from the budget message every year is that we're going to tax within the levy. We're going to run our operations within the two and a half percent. Um, that, um, I think one really clarifying thing in this that has been kind of convoluted in the past. Is to put a financing plan along with the capital plan. So there's the operational capital plan, then there's the bigger, longer-term project plans, like, like new school buildings, um, et cetera, et cetera. And it's, and it's identifying funding sources for those and starting to link that. I think that's, it, it's one of the most complicated things in the world to do. I think we all know that in our own personal lives, you just don't know when the, the, you know, the furnace is going to die and you're, oh, shoot. But we're supposed to do the roof this year, you know, I mean, but I, but the advisory spoke pretty clearly about trying to match those. Projections of what is going to be needed over the next X number of years with some funding sources. So I think that's important. Also, the, um, the uniform tax rate is, is another big piece of this, just in terms of revenue, that, that, you know, we will commit to that. And that's something that the Board of Assessors independently vote on and recommend to us for a final vote in January. But those are the kind of the big picture frameworks upon which Chris can start building out, um, both operational and long-term capital needs.
Thank you, Diane, and I really appreciate your institutional knowledge and memory here on these messages going back throughout the years, so that's really helpful.
I'm just super happy we have one and it's very clear this year. And thanks to advisory too, I mean. Gave us some good.
We very much appreciate advisories' help on this too. Jean, I know you have lots more questions.
Um, no, actually, this has been helpful, and Carrie, I do appreciate that a lot of the select board goals are incorporated throughout with. I think an acknowledgement of what advisory sent to us, which I thought was. Incredibly astute and correct, um, in terms of, I think it's everything we've been talking about as well, that. You know, for example, they said the capital plan is incomplete without a financing plan, you know. I think we all know that. We all know we need a complete inventory of long-term needs with, you know, realistic projections associated with them. And we need to run these two um reviews in tandem. Um, the one thing that I would bring up, because I, I know that this is a pain point for many people. And this may fall below. The amount that is worthy of a mention in the budget message, but. The select board, um, has acknowledged that there is a field capacity issue. We have an ongoing field study that's out there. You know, again, I'm not sure if this rises to the level of something that we want to put in the budget message. I know we have a bunch of other ongoing projects, like, you know. Zoning reform is going to cost money, village revitalization costs money. Um, but I did want to put that out there because I know that this is something, you know, a lot of people care about.
No, I absolutely agree with that, Jean. I'm looking here. Where we can put that appropriately, maybe in with the list of all of the private budget. The bullet point number two under two. We could add. Fields under there in that list.
I mean, ultimately, it's a capital.
Yeah.
We don't think about it like that, but it is, I mean, you know, CPC would think about it potentially as a capital.
No, I completely agree. It's a big priority with all the other big priorities. So I would be fine adding that to that bullet. Cory?
I, I was just, I remember what Jean just said, it's just, I mean, right now, I, I think the field study is in just the, the infrastructure improvements.
Yeah.
Basket. The other things kind of have their, they have their own committees or their own stuff, like they're a little more of a, of a unit. Um, so, you know, I think, you know, it's, it's actually good to see this kind of in a timeline, right? We have things that are uh developed and the town is working on, we have residents working on, we have residents conceptualizing. But then we also have these other things that are, you know, in the first or second or third stages, and that's kind of why the longer-term infrastructure plan is important, because you really need to. Like a Gantt chart, basically, of where we are with all these different things. And that way we know, okay, when is an appropriate time to put it in the budget message? Obviously, we could have the budget message be four hundred pages and mention everything we're working on, but it's really not the point. So, um, this, you know, I think we go either way. I think it's great under infrastructure, considering we don't really have. We're at the, we understand there's a problem. We understand there has to be something done about it, or we're not yet at the point where we are. Um, you know, comparing uh different options. I think we'll get there, uh, but this also doesn't mean we can't get there. So, so, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with it is.
Okay, Diane?
Yeah, I, I, as much as I agree with what Jean said, I don't know that it rises to the, to this level of a, of a big budget message. And I mean, unless we added things, but for example, we adopted as another select board goal, you know, supporting some of the alternative energy. Um, initiatives, you know, for, um, so, so like, there's all these. There's so many things that we would include that come under all of our priorities. Um, that, you know, I think that to the extent that we give a global wash, and again, the budget comes through us. We're going to be working on this on a, you know, on, on, on a regular basis, and I think Chris knows. Comes through us. We're going to be working on this on a, you know, on, on, on a regular basis. And I think Chris knows where, where. Our priorities and opportunities lie. So I would just say keep it as, as high level as possible and not specific as possible, but.
Yeah, no, and I, that's kind of, I think, what it seems like the message has been the past few years, at least from reading them. The field stuff is not, not in here. Do you know what I mean? But I also understand the point that maybe it needs to be specifically mentioned. I don't.
I mean, you could go either way. Including roads and fields. I mean, a field can cost as much as several roads and that's the sad truth. Um. But Diane raises a great point about alternate, alternative energy. I mean. The, you know, the brick grant municipal.
Right.
That, that could have a price tag that exceeds in terms of face. Down hall, right? And so.
Yeah, no, sorry, Jean. We also have our goals ongoing too. So it's not like those are just. Gone now with the budget message, like are, are, we still have our select board goals as a live. Document always changing too. So again, this is, I, this might be just philosophy on how we want to do the budget message as a board in the future. I don't know. I appreciate all this feedback. Especially from Diane who's done this a lot of times. Me, Corey and Jean haven't.
So what, um, I'm sorry, Jean, you still have your hand up.
Oh, sorry. No, I was.
Just as, as a matter of process, uh, you know, I think, uh, you, you know. It, would it be appropriate to make a motion to adopt these with maybe a couple of changes? Or would you like to workshop these again? Carrie with some of our.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, I mean, I would, would, I was fine on voting on it tonight, but I also don't mind putting in some minor changes. I don't think it needs big changes.
Yeah, okay. Also. Yeah, I mean, I'll take a shot at it. I mean, I, I would.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we, we adopt the, uh. Fiscal 2023, uh, year budget message as, uh, presented, um, with, uh, two, the two following changes. Under section one, the third bullet point, changing the word updating to, uh, recommending updates. Uh, as well as, um. Adding, or is it roads, uh, inclu- uh, and in section three, bullet point one, two, three, four. Uh, adding, including roads and fields, uh. Replacing, including roads.
Thank you for that motion, Corey. All right, do we have a second?
A second.
Second, okay. Any more discussion? Jean, I especially want to know, i- is that?
No, I was seconding, but I'm.
Okay, okay. So any further discussion on that? Are we happy with those changes? Again, this is a working document, like we're not writing this totally in stone here.
Yeah, I mean, the bigger question I have is how we ensure the implementation of, you know.
Over the budget process.
I think that's our job every meeting to be making sure that's happening. It's our main goal as select board members. All right. If there's no further discussion, we can do a roll call vote, starting with Corey.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Lee Dipple, done.
Diane Kennedy, I, sorry about that.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right, yay, we have a budget message. Thank you everyone for that.
Just, uh, Tracy and Chris, did you get the, the two tweaks already documented? I just want to be sure we don't lose. Okay, thanks.
Great.
We can watch this on Cohasset 143 TV.
Exactly. Yeah. There is a recording. All right. On to town meeting and our review of warrant articles and articles being referred to the planning board. Chris and I know Lauren's coming back for this too.
Yes, so, um. In fact, if Lauren's here, I, I just assume, so. We're going to walk through this, this, as, as 11 spots on the warrant, the month, uh, for 11 articles. Um, three of them are proposed zoning amendment changes that are going to be referred for planning board hearing. Um, and I believe that there was a number distributed about them. Um, is that, that's correct, right? Um, and, um, so the planning board is kind of here, and so Lauren is kind of walk through those and, um. So what happened is they'll get the, the, the way the process works, the select word refers of the planning board for. Uh, public hearing and review and the planning hears them and then, uh, they go to advisory and then they come back to us. Um, for, for further review. And you decide at that point, if you're good, uh, you, you, you've got a recommendation, you've got to put them on. So, um. Uh, Lauren is here to, to, uh, unless somebody has a question on process, uh, Lauren can explain what these are.
I see Jean's hand first. Go ahead.
I, I do have a quick question on process. Chris, can you remind me and the public if, when? When did the zoning bylaw changes go into effect?
Um, they go into effect. So if something's passed, for example, like the ones that were passed back in May. Um, they technically go into effect as of the date of 10 B. They're retroactive to. So long as the attorney general's office approves them.
Yeah, assuming that there's the AG when she's approving something, doesn't have an issue and has to go back and forth. Okay, so. But it's not like the data posting or review by the planning board or something like that.
No, I, I, I do think people notice though that point that there's a change coming down the pike, um. So, um. I don't, I, I get, I, so, so Lauren can, uh, is that actually a question? I think.
So, okay, so assuming the bylaws fine, it's the data town meeting.
Yes, as the data adoption is usually one of those. Typically because, or it's in effect and then the, the. And the, the, the AG usually takes up to three months to review this, so. So I'm, uh, Lauren, are you good to go?
Yes, thank you.
Lauren.
Thank you, everyone. Hello again. Uh, let me, I'm going to show you the public hearing notice that went out for the planning board. Um, in a moment, let me just make sure I have the right one open. Um, all right, so we have three articles that are zoning articles that are being proposed for this special town meeting and they actually came about, um. As work product of the master plan zoning bylaw working group. And, um, let me just get that public hearing notice up. So. Um, the first article is actually a deletion of a section of classes by law that, um, is known as the single lot exemption. And essentially, in essence, there is actually a state statute that upholds a, a port, like a single lot exemption for all. Um, municipalities throughout the Commonwealth, but Cohasset has a unique provision that makes it a little bit more broadly applicable. Um, in a way that the state statute wouldn't. And as a result, the zoning bylaw has seen, you know, tracked, um, history and a lot of the lots that were, that. You see developed nowadays are, you know, actually don't conform to zoning, but they, you know, are buildable due to single lot exemption. So. Uh, the group is proposing to eliminate Cohasset's unique provision of this and we would just then default back to what the state statute is, which is how. Many municipalities and neighboring communities are, um. The second article would be changes to residential zoning amendments and what this would do, um, it was actually. It's going to modify for existing definitions and then integrate six new definitions relative to residential zoning. And these are things relative to, uh, frontage access, things that have come about as, um. Things that are either vague or, uh, you know, unidentified in our current bylaws that if in place, it's believed that. Uh, enforcement would have, uh, an easier time sort of applying some of these standards and things like that. So that's the intent behind the second zoning article. And then the third zoning article, if you remember at the last, um. Round of town meeting, we had sort of what was referred to as land alteration part one that was, uh, approved. By town meeting. This is sort of the take at land alteration part two. And what this does is it looks to require, um, the. Removal or modification of exposed ledge face or accessory structures. So things like a shed, a pool, things that aren't exactly, um, you know, primary to the. Primary, you know, structure that would be on the lot, um, and it would require a special permit process through the planning board for, you know, a certain percentage. Of, um, ledge and the, the reason being is that is an intent, uh, to respond to concerns in the community that. They're seeing sort of the character of like ledge and things in the neighborhood be stripped away and modified and, you know. Um, so that's where that came from. So the process here, there's these three articles. What you would do tonight. If you choose is to re- refer them back to the planning board to begin their public hearings, which will open on October 13th. There'll be an opportunity for the planning board and any members of the public to ask questions, to debate sort of, you know, different pieces of this. Um, they may modify some of the pieces of the language in the draft articles. That's to be determined, um, in the public hearing process. And then once they concluded, they would, the planning board themselves would vote whether to recommend that this move forward to town meeting or not. If they. So did, we would return to you as well as the advisory committee for your recommendations ultimately leading in to town meeting. So I'll stop sharing, uh, my screen now and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Lauren, Diane and then Jean and then Corey.
Uh, just, just a process question. If. The planning board didn't have an affirmative vote to recommend an article moved forward to town meeting. The select board would still have the ability or not to. Put that article on the warrant.
That's a good one.
Yes, I believe that yes, you would still have an opportunity, um, because it eventually comes through the select board to place or not place something on the warrant. However, it is a, um, requirement of, of the attorney general filing that the planning board recommendation go along with it. So I'm. To be honest, I'm not sure that would stand from an attorney general review process of planning board, you know, if, if it happened to shake out that way.
It happened back in 2009. I was on the planning board then.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I remember it very clearly. There was an article, I think it was a citizens petition that came and the planning board refused to even. Make a decision one way or another, so click it on the petition, uh, on the warrant, um, because of that, um, requirement.
All right, so it does happen.
Not that I expect that this will happen because this has been so well discussed and vetted and obviously it'll go through the public planning process. So. Public hearing process.
All right, thanks Diane. Jean.
Um, thanks Lauren, as usual, for the helpful information. Um, just two quick questions. Um, well, one really, I, I'll, I'll table until I see the actual, um, content of the proposed bylaw regs, but. Are you going to be doing any analysis as to the amount of lots affected? Because I do think that that was really helpful to understand for the land alteration by law article. Um, and is probably going to be important to people to. And I realize some of it is, you know, hard to do in terms of ledger removal, like that, that's a little bit of, of guesswork, but. Um, with, for example, single lot exemptions or, um, you know, other lots where we may be able to get some pretty specific details. On numbers affected, just so we have a sense of them.
Yes, so, um, actually I believe the zoning bylaw working group does have that data. If I know Katie Dugan as well as I do. I'm sure she has a spreadsheet on it. So, um, I'm happy to bring that information back and, and the zoning bylaw working group, some of the members will attend. Uh, you know, subsequent presentations. This is just sort of the, the formal, uh, kicking off the process and making sure that we have, you know, your approval to move forward with public hearings. For the planning board.
Katie definitely has a spreadsheet on all of this. Shout out to you, Katie, if you're watching.
I was hoping.
Yeah. All right, Jean, do you have another question?
No, I'll table.
All right, Corey.
Uh, yeah, I just want to say thanks to the zoning bylaw working group and thank you Lauren for, for getting this stuff together. Uh, the one. Ledge issues is, is kind of the, I think, one of the hot button resident issues in town and it's complicated. I'm glad we are. Taking a, uh, measured, um, intentional process to look at it. It's something that, you know, it's. It's not just character, but I mean, there is some, you know, the value of this land in, in Cohasset is now so valuable, that stuff that. You wouldn't think of building a house on is now buildable and, uh, you know, we just, we need to understand what that means for our town, uh, before it gets out of hand. So. Um, what was the date again, Lauren, for the hearing? I just wanted to encourage the public. That's what we have hearings for. If you have opinions on this, this is exactly, it's a hearing. That's what it means. It's for, for you to be heard. So, um, I just want to mention to Chris and. Let's just be sure that this message on this hearing really goes out far and wide. That way. People know what this is and then they're comfortable with it when it, when it's time to make that change. Thank you.
Absolutely. And just to answer that question, um, the public hearing is on October 13th. It starts at 6:30 PM. And the agenda, the Zoom information is already posted on the town website and the public calendar. So people can access it there. Um, and we can certainly incorporate it in, uh, Chris's update on Friday.
Yeah, that's a good idea to get it in all the mailings and we can all be sharing on social media too. Just to make sure it gets out far and wide.
Absolutely. And even if, if anybody wanted to comment but couldn't attend the hearing, they can submit written comment, um, that I can distribute for the record and for the board. So just so you know. Um, anyone who's watching or interested can email me, Lauren Lind and the planning director.
Thank you, Lauren. That's helpful too. All right, any other, yeah, Chris, go ahead.
Oh no, if you're ready, then I would, uh, ask that someone make a motion. Do you have the, the, I, I have the section of the statute, Lauren, do you have a formalized version of this? Or is it just simply that this like, that there's a motion, uh, to refer these three articles pursuant to section 48. Uh, chapter 48, section five of the state zoning law to the planning board for further, uh, for public here. Does that sound right?
Right, yes. Yep, section five of chapter 48.
So moved.
Good job.
Good luck, Tracy.
That was the easiest way to do it, Diane.
Wasn't going to try.
Tracy, it's on a public here notice.
Yeah, exactly. All right, we have a question in a second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Go for it, Corey.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Lee Dipple, done. Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Wonderful. I'm glad we got that done.
Thank you, everyone. I'll be back in a, a couple of weeks.
Thanks, Lauren. Lauren, we really appreciate it. All right, Chris. What else do we need to discuss on?
I was going to walk through the warrant with all of you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just give you a timeframe. So I'm going to share my screen. There's a couple of amendments to the one that I sent, we sent out on Friday. Can everybody see this now?
Yeah.
Um, first articles are some amendments to the fiscal, uh, operating, uh, fiscal 22 operating budget. Um, all the money was, was, uh, was planned. Uh, it just, the, the, the bonding, the. Took, the final bonding took place after 10 meetings. So these are the exact numbers that was already budgeted into the capital stabilization from the law. Before town meeting last year, according to Don. So this is just in the actual amounts, um. Uh, dollar, uh, and they're still in, uh, I tap some money for Don just to brush them up and make sure. So, uh, these are, these are coming out of funds, uh, not, not, there's no supplemental appropriating from taxes. He's already in, in various funds. And they're all, I know, all involved in that. Article two, unfortunately, there seems to be some random unpaid bills. I don't entirely know why. Uh, sewer has something, those had to do with service calls. And I think I'm trying to get to the bottom of these. Uh, the sin oil, I think, uh, involves actually, um, uh, some kind of recycling issue. So I'm trying to find out what's going on with that. There was some random, uh, we use Amazon, various departments use Amazon for, you know, various supplies and things. Um, and for some reason, some of these, some bills may have gotten lost in the shuffle. I'm not sure what happened. So. We'll have more details on those, uh, for the next quarter. Uh, in terms of distribution of stabilization funds, um. The, the only one, uh, for the fall this point is, is 350,000 to go into the OPAP trust fund. And that's something that was already planned on. It keeps the town at that higher level of contributions. So the one-time cost, I can walk through a little bit more. Um, so. Um, the, the recommendation is, um, is actually not the town match departments, by the way, they're just there for the holders. Um. So, uh, would, would be to allocate, um, the 750 of the, this 1.5 million dollars of free cash that's available to be carved up. Um, so 750, the recommendation is to go into the town hall, into a fund to, to hold for the town hall project. Uh, obviously if for whatever reason it doesn't happen, it's still there. You just take it out and spend somewhere else. Uh, but it's a down payment towards. Paying down as much in advance as possible with available funds. Um, another 250, 250,000 will be allocated to the school facility study with expectations that will probably be needed in the spring. Uh, but this is a, a down payment, uh, to start, to allow them to, to potentially bring a project manager on. And to do some other work to start the process. That's kind of be a, a, a process that's going to probably go on for a couple of years. Um, and again, I, I don't think there's a defined. This, this one needs to be defined, but this is a starting amount of money and it'll get the committee through, uh, at least into the spring. 75,000 for consulting services for, um, a zoning study. We've applied for a grant for $75,000. Uh, we may not need this, but it's here as a holder in case we do, uh, and then we may need it anyway. I mean, it may, may, if, if the scope of the study, that's something else that the board needs to. You know, to figure out having some kind of a joint meeting, hopefully in November to get the various boards together to say, okay, what's the scope of the zoning study going to look like? Um, that'll determine how much section it costs. As a holder in here for Elm Street, I'm, I'm not sure that would come out of free cash. Actually, we'll probably have to come out somewhere else, but just here, uh, in case we don't get the grant. Um, field, field study, field maintenance, uh, it, it may end up here or in a CPC, our article, uh, but you know, we're still. Grinding through to see if there might be something else we need to do that would get us into spring. And then one that they just got put on my radar today, um, if you were, uh, recall the town that had major records, um. Upgrade here at town hall with a company, um, that came in and, and, and looked at everything and, and. Clean stuff up and box stuff and, and give us electronic reporting. But we need to do the same thing with cemetery. It's everything's in paper. Everything is, you know. And, um, uh, and the company that actually does, that did the. and the company that actually does, that did the work for town hall won't touch that. They don't do cemetery stuff. So, uh, uh, Michelle's been working with DPW with, with some companies that specialize in cemetery records. Cause they really need to come into the 21st century and stuff. There are still two active cemeteries. And there's potentially hundreds and hundreds of open gray, you know, available plots. I think it's actually over 1,000 potentially between the two cemeteries. To really get this clean and updated for the digital age, the DPW is a little behind on that. And, uh, this would be a start towards that. Um, and I'll stop there for a second. Cause this is a question, Diane's questions.
Cemetery records thing is actually really interesting. You don't really think about that being important, but it's clearly important. All right. I don't know. Was it?
Ian was first.
Ian probably had her hand up first. Go ahead.
I don't mind letting Diane go first if you have a quick question Diane.
My, my question just is, um, on cemetery, which, um, you know, I know it came up at CPC last night. One of the, it, you know, they kind of, there's a cemetery committee that manages kind of the operational piece of the cemetery, but how is it all funded? Is it, does it act like an enterprise fund and is it off, off books completely? And I know we're ultimately the commissioners. If there's a dispute between it, but I guess what I'm saying is, is there, is there funding within the cemetery budget to do any of this work?
So yes, the, the select board of the cemetery commissioners of the town, um, a perpetual maintenance fund. I don't think this is appropriate. I, 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 this wouldn't strike me as something that would come out of that. There is a budget. I mean, there is in, in the public works budget, there is a cemetery park and cemetery unit and they, and they, and there's money in there just for regular routine stuff. The, the, if you remember, the board certainly did tap money from this, uh, for the perpetual care fund to, to upgrade the irrigation system at, at Woodside. Cause that needed to be done. That was, that was a fair thing. Routine maintenance just comes out of the budget, the operating budget and then mow and then cut trees and trim bushes. This is more of an upgrade again. Um, and again, the, the funding is available and I talked to Michelle just about it today and it's, it's just something we should just start on. Um, and, um, again, because we've already had such great success with the town side records, it's great, I think, to start moving on this too. Into the digital age. It's really time to get into the
Oh, like completely. I just questioning the, you know.
And then there's especially, and again, Michelle said there's a specialist, this specialist companies that just do this stuff. Uh, and they're already starting to work with us.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for clarifying that, Chris. Go ahead, Jean.
So with respect to the school facility study and the town hall project, um, I think these two requests really emphasize the need for us to begin starting more public and proactive conversations about our infrastructure plan, um, including financing sources and how they all interrelate because, you know, this is going to be a zero sum game soon, um, in terms of the amount of free cash we can keep moving around as I think if we're doing it in an uncoordinated way as projects begin to pile up. And so, I, I think it would be helpful for us, and I'm just going to suggest this to have particularly as we're starting to allocate some big amounts of money or potentially allocate towards town hall and the schools that we meet with advisory and capital budget, maybe in a working group setting. Um, and then, you know, have those committees come in and present because I'm sure they would also love to hear from school facilities. And I realize it's early and they haven't done the feasibility study. Likewise, town hall in terms of understanding, you know, what the cost is now. Obviously it was 13, 14 million previously, but you know, costs of supplies have gone through the roof. And so if we have any sense of that, which I don't think we do at this point, likewise with the schools. You know, with the feasibility study, it's only 250 right now that we're allocating, but if you look at Hangum, for example, they did 750 for foster school, which is my childhood elementary school and it's probably around the same size as Coasit Millan High School. So I think that we're underfunding the feasibility study potentially, but I'd like to hear from them on that point because, you know, presumably they're looking at, um, those aspects. And so I do think that this sort of highlights the need for us to begin having a more, you know, public and, uh, probably more detailed and involved conversation on the parallel, um, you know, plans with respect to financing and, and our capital needs too. I, I think part of the question is how the infrastructure plan runs in parallel with our ongoing 10-year capital needs. Just, you know, school roofs that are breaking, roads that need to be repaired, et cetera. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Yeah. I feel like you've made some comments for short-term stuff, but a lot of this is longer term too, Jean. I feel like for how, not just for this town meeting, but for several upcoming town meetings.
Yeah. To start a good process.
And I, I agree with you. Yeah. Yeah. No. And I agree with you that having some joint or, you know, group meetings to workshop this or talk through, it's a really good idea. So I think that's a really good suggestion. Corey?
Yeah. I was just gonna say, I mean, um, for those, I don't, is anybody watching? Cause there's a game on here.
I hope everyone, by the way, Corey, I just wanted to let you to know that Red Sox
There's a score.
Are winning by two right now. We got a
Doesn't, doesn't matter. You're not gonna win anyway. Um, you, it's, it's not like free cash where you can sock it away for later. Maybe it is. Anyway. That analogy does not work, but no, I mean, you know, uh, we have a free cash policy and, and you know, what's great about that is the end of a year, you know, we can look and say, all right, you know, there's, there's an amount of money that we haven't built into the budget. You know, we're going to budget for things. We're going to budget for long-term capital plans, but you know, by having good fiscal policies, it gives us the opportunity to make strategic decisions and strategic moves to get ahead of things. So for instance, funding, you know, giving some money now to the school facilities committee, they're going to need more money later. I'm pretty sure about that, but we can get ahead of the game. Um, town hall, again, 750 is a lot of money and that, that gets us, you know, it saves a lot of money down the road when it comes to if we need to finance it. So, to me, this is what this money is for. I like how it's, how it's been carved up. Um, we obviously can't make a, make a habit of it, but you know, uh, when years, if you know, this is, I don't want to say the reward, but this is the outcome of good budgeting is that you have money left over to make some strategic strikes, if you will. Um, and I think this is a good way to do it.
Thank you, Corey. Jean.
I guess a part of my concern is that we know we have an underfunded capital plan, a 10-year capital plan that has been pointed out to us by advisory, right? In that memo that we're literally looking at that says, when we project out, we have four million each year going forward. And we don't fund the capital fund with four million each year. So I do think that, um, we have pressure on us to look hard at how we're allocating our various fund sources. Um, so I'm not sure that, you know, freedom isn't free and I'm not sure that free cash is so free. I think it's coming at a later cost. And I just think that, you know, we're being urged to be mindful of that. Hence the more sort of big picture planning process that I continue to urge that we really think hard about and start engaging in now. Um, because I do, I do take what advisory said pretty seriously, not just cause I know them all and think highly of them, but you know, in general, I think it makes sense.
Are you saying you miss advisory, Jean?
Sometimes.
No, I think that point is well taken and it's definitely something we need to keep talking about, especially heading into regular town meeting in the spring. For this particular one though, I, I mean, I, I respect your comment, but is there a specific line item that you really have problems with?
Uh, yeah. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that maybe the school feasibility study is a lot of money for something that may not be enough to make the impact we want to make. Um, I'm open to talking about town hall, but I would still like to see the financing plan for that. And once specifically we're talking about, we began talking about that last night at CPC. And, um, you know, there's no written proposal. There's nothing out there. Um, there's no, you know, sort of public collaboration on a financing plan there. And I think if we want to build trust, a public trust in this process, I think it's important to have those discussions openly, including about the financing. Obviously this was something I talked about earlier. But I think transparency and including, you know, many people, including during these public meetings, instead of just sort of having these isolated, you know, disparate funding points, I, I don't think is the way to go. I think, hey, let's, you know, present a plan and we'll argue about it and that's America and we'll, you know, see how it goes, but at least we have a plan that we're following as we're moving forward with these allocations here and there. That would be my strong preference.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Chris, do you have any?
I gotta jump back into the, the, uh, the traffic.
Yeah.
I will say that we're, we're, we're tying up. Uh, so one of the, the things about decoupling some of these major infrastructure projects on the cap plan is going to help, I think, clarify what our actual annual recurring numbers are, because there were some big ticket items in there that, that won't be in there anymore because they don't belong there. Um, the public safety bill would be one of them. Um, and, uh, and I think it'll help, uh, with the conversation, but you know, there, there, there's no question that the ongoing conversations continue, uh, both work internally and also that, you know, there's, there's gotta be a lot of public conversation. The whole reason we're having the conversations about these things are because of the public conversation that led to a town hall building committee and led to a school facilities committee.
Yep.
School facilities committee is a long way down the road. I, I, I don't, again, I, I, they, they've literally met twice. They've just organized into subcommittees and they've um, it's going to take them many, many months to move forward, though they're, I guess it's a great group. I've enjoyed working with them so far. Um, at the same time, I can't be the staff member. More than any way I can, right? But I'm not, I'm not an expert on this stuff. So they gotta need to get a project manager on board. We've got to have budget and plan that. It's gotta take time. The good news, they're all enthusiastic, energetic. They're already planning on touring some schools in the future to get some ideas. They've already started to deep dive into what the facilities are like today. Uh, and then there's kind of need to be some work done on, uh, some decisions made on what they really need to deep dive into. So, um, uh, again, I, I think they've started fresh and energized and I think they have a lot of work to do. And again, I, 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 I hear Jean, um, completely. There's definitely, I, I think having a, you know, I, I think 250 more than gets them into the spring. That's sad. If anywhere they go, it's kind of need to be more money. I don't think there's any question about that. Uh, I just don't think we know. We don't really have any, this, it would be, they don't even know. They, they don't know what to ask for. I've told them we have money committed, period, because they need it. And, and, and it starts, it starts down the road. When the town hall project started, you know, they didn't start with a million dollars. They started with a hundred thousand dollars to start doing this. Um, so, but again, the conversations continue. This is just a start. All right. So this is just a starting point of conversation for December, which is part of the ongoing conversation. So let me pop this back up for you.
So I think if it's, if it's actually money for a consultant to help us decide, including the contours of an actual feasibility study or like the first step of a feasibility study, I think that's important to
That's what they are.
You know, maybe this is on the committee to like more clearly explain, because I do think if you come back for 750, more 750 for another feasibility study, people will say, well, didn't you just get 250 for a feasibility study, right? And so again, I think this is where
This is a placeholder. This is a placeholder at this point, Jean. I, I mean, they literally, they're not ready to even ask for money. That said, I don't want to have them, we only have two times a year that we can actually allocate money. So if you don't have that now, and again, yeah, I don't want to say it's it, it, it's, it's, it's for the process. I think it's probably fair to say school facilities study process. Um, and again, so I think you're right. It's important to, so people understand what this is, because they don't know yet what they need. And, and at the next meeting, uh, later this month, um, I'm, I'm talking to Michelle about a project manager process. They can talk about that. Uh, and some of the members are getting more information. So they have a lot of work to do. Uh, you're right. I, I don't want, I don't want to think, I, I don't also, I don't want people to think it's 250 and that's going to get it all done. It's just a placeholder of money so that they have something to work with as they develop. Um, and again, I think that by the spring, there needs to be a better idea of areas, you know, that's one of the challenges about local government here. We only, you only get limited with us to fund things. And sometimes you just gotta stick money aside. So it's ready to go when you need. That said, I think the descriptions are super critical because this is real money and it's also going to lead to even more real money and real projects. And I think it's super important that all the I's get dotted and all the T's get crossed and all the dollar signs get dollar signed, uh, as we go through this. So, um, I will.
Yeah. Well said, Chris. This is really just to help them get started and they are really excited and they do have a really good group. And I think a lot of good is going to come out of them within the next few months, but we just gotta get them something for this next town meeting. Corey?
Yeah. A quarter million dollars here. Quarter million dollars there. All of a sudden you're talking about real money, right? The, uh, no, I was just, I was just gonna kind of just re-perspective ourselves a little bit, just to say like, this is a committee that we tasked and that would, you know, uh, and we need to fund it if we want that committee to do their job. Um, this really isn't, Chris is, it's not, Chris isn't advocating for this. It's really, we created this process. And I think, you know, being sure they have some stuff, because if we don't have another town meeting till next, that basically stops them from doing any work until then. So I'm very comfortable with this the way it is.
Oh yeah. And don't misunderstand me. I, I'm not opposed to the school facilities committee getting the resources they want. I just want to play out, you know, are we communicating on the warrant, what we're really talking about here and, um, you know, managing expectations about what we're really talking about as well. So.
As, again, this is where it's, it's a, it's a short one. It was, there's a lot of conversation that you have over the next, you know, for the next two months, but the next month of like warrant building and then educating the public and all that before, uh, the actions. These numbers, I mean, if something changed between, and December, these numbers could be tweaked, numbers could be tweaked to this specific item. Um, although I go back to the
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so there are a couple of capital projects. Uh, we don't do a lot of capital in the fall, but there's, there's three things that have jumped out. One is replacement of defibrillators. Uh, both police and fire have defibrillators as part of their, you know, equipment. And it turns out that if we get, uh, we can actually get a $300 per unit, they're ready, they're heading for, but they were planned for the spring to be replaced in the spring. It's a whole bunch. And I think it's, uh, I think it's 25 of them. We get, if we do it by December 31st, we get $300 a unit back as like a rebate towards the new ones. Uh, so it, it, it suddenly moved this forwards. That's 750 dollars. That, that's not an, that's not an insubstantial amount of money towards this project. And, um, so that's why this is on here. That's where we're going to go through capital now. It's supposed to win to the spring. New voting booths, having a third precinct needs, you have to have more voting. Um, there's so many per precinct. So that would buy, and a voting list of the, the place where you fill out your ballot. We actually have a third machine already, uh, that was bought ahead of time, just to have an extra. We may end up needing a, another tabulator. Come the spring, we'll have to go through that, figure that out. I think we'll be okay. I think for the first election, uh, the, the, the voting, a machine company, and I don't remember what, who they are. I have been very supportive, uh, getting extra machines and stuff as needed. So we, we should be fine for the spring and then we'll have to figure out, we need another tabular. That's a little more expensive. And then I would just, uh, the, uh, the Elm Street project, which we've been talking about, um, there's a water main and a sewer main replacement in there. Uh, the water main replaces kind of extend the, the water is taking a look at it and I'm going to extend it a little further up margin street, which made sense. There was a little piece of doubt. Um, so they're gonna replace the water main all the way through almost to where it bends, you know, once it, once it passes the Coasit property and it starts to bend by the, 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 uh, the oaks. Uh, it's gonna add another, so it's another hundred thousand dollars that will come out of the water fund to do that work. I'll, I'll, more details on that.
So Chris, this is from the water enterprise fund when you said
Yes. Yeah. The Elm Street Water Main Replacement will come out of, I, I get, I don't know if it's the stabilization fund or retained earnings. That's just, I, I have to find out exactly what's going for me. Again, I just got that number officially today.
Okay.
There's a piece of land that had been talked about, uh, in the spring, I think. It's called the Rice Lot. It's owned by, I think, the Rice family. It's kind of stuck kind of, uh, northish of Lily Pond, um, in an area that's surrounded by their own land. It's a, it's a perfect land for, but it can't be built, but the, the, the family just wants to donate it to the town. So it's, it, it, we, I'll have some more reports and all on that. I have to fix a little language on this correct, but it seems like a logical thing to accept. Uh, it's, it's, it's free. And actually compliments land that's already preserved, which is good. Um, the next three are the ones you just referred, seven, eight, nine. Uh, planning board and there'll be language in here, obviously, next time you see this. CPC is on here in case, uh, there's, uh, a, a couple of requests and they may be something like, again, the fields in here, there might be a fields, a field thing. I, I, the conversation about, um, a few other projects, but I think they're heading for the spring. I think the, the bigger things are heading for the spring, but build both in field maintenance and also field study. There might be a need to do something this fall. And, um, and rather, you know, so we could do work over the winter and spring. So that's just a whole placeholder. This, if there is anything, there won't be a community preservation article. Corey?
I just, um, I know that's the last of the, of the normal articles, but we didn't get, um, pegs not on here. Can you, um, get with Don to get CCTV funded? 143 TV funded.
Yeah, at the rate, you mean the regular allocation.
Yeah, we just, we need to do that every six months.
Thank you for bringing that up, Corey. I always forget that it's not yearly.
Is that, well, so you, I mean, it used to be just quarterly, but then the state messed things up and, uh, you know, Senator has, uh, co-sponsored a bill, but as always, they're very busy. So, um, it's not, you know, funding these, these things are still not easy.
Yeah, we gotta keep our TV channel running.
Yeah, that'll, that'll go in. I, 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 I'll let Don figure it out. It's like one goes into that. That's just a
Yeah, it's simple. There's one of the Thank you.
All right, Jean and then Diane.
On the CPC article, just to clarify, I don't think that, and I could be wrong. I'm not a CPC, but I was reading up on it. I'm not sure we can do maintenance and other related improvements. We can do capital improvements, but I don't think on the fields we can use CPC funds for.
Yeah. When I say that, I, I don't mean, I don't mean routine maintenance. It's like repair, like, like a, an upgrade, field upgrade.
Like a shed.
Yeah, yeah. Or, or
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's not, it's, yeah, I, I'm sorry. I, I use that term. Correct.
Or even fencing or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, something, there's a, there's a, there's a potential, there's a couple of potential projects that are done. And we're not sure if they will have to be done this fall or, or, if, if it's better find them in the fall to get them done in the spring, we could wait until annual time. So, yeah, thank you, Jean, for the clarification. And then the last one was that there is a there is a, there was a filed citizen's petition, which has been bounced off council for review. That's about the baseball. So that's all. And then, you know, I, 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 council just taking the language of the article and figuring it out. So that is the warrant. So as, as it's, as it's drafted at the moment.
And just to clarify too, for people watching, that citizen's petition would be a non-binding resolution.
I, I think that's, I, I think, I think that's, I think that's what it's meant to be.
Yeah.
That said, I, I, there's some language in there that
Yeah, we know, we got to workshop the language, but I believe that.
I believe those are the type, but again, I'm not, I'm not prepared to talk about that.
Okay. To be continued. We will discuss it more once we have the language workedshopped with council.
And, and just process wise, I know there's a couple of questions. So advisory meets next Wednesday, planning board meets next Wednesday. So advisory will be looking non-planning board issues. It's scheduled to meet again, I think on the twenty seventh. So by then, and you'll meet on the nineteenth. So if they've wrapped anything up on the thirteenth that you're ready to look at on the ninth, like any of the budget articles, you can potentially wrap those up on the nineteenth.
Okay.
The way it's shaking out now, it looks like the number of second meeting will be where you get into some of the media, you know, like the, the planning board articles. Those are, those are probably zoning, I also probably come back to you on the second, which is the last night. Before we have to lock the warrant up. So the next meeting, you'll get one shot, and then on the second, it'll, it'll be the last thing. I'll keep you up to date if there's any other changes or anything between now. So typically the way the process works, the advisory looks at things first. And capital will have to meet as well. So capital advisory, and then CPC again, the CPC article. Things will go through advisory and then they come back to you with everyone having pined or recommended. And then you'll hear, and if there's any updates I said between now and that on any of the articles.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Cory, and then Diane.
I, I mentioned this to, to Chris earlier, but it, it was looking at the citizen's petition. I, I was, I'd make the recommendation that we don't have an informational summary. It's not a petition that we, that comes from us. So I don't want us to introduce a, you know, a different, you know, it should stand on its own. Because it's, it, so I was just going to recommend that we don't have that informational summary on it because it isn't from us.
I was just trying to clarify what it even was for the people to know.
No, that's fine. No, I was just, it has it now. And I, since I mentioned to Chris, I wanted to mention to my colleagues that, you know, that was my kind of take on the informational summary.
I mean, I think the people need to know what they're voting on and what's binding versus non-binding too. So I, I think procedurally, it needs to be made clear to the voters at town meeting.
Well, do we usually have informational summaries? And Diane, you would probably know.
So typically, we always have informational summaries and usually in the case of citizens petitions, we haven't had one for a few years, I don't think, but the, the proponents, so the citizens, the, the lead proponents would provide the informational summary to the town. Having said that, the reason I put my hand up is, you know, one of the key functions of town council is getting us to a clean town meeting with a clean warrant. And I think it might be good, especially where we have new counsel to invite Attorney Murray to come to one of our, you know, whether it's the nineteenth or the second, it doesn't matter, but it just, at some point where she can walk us through the warrant and lay our fears about procedures and, and informational summaries, et cetera, et cetera. But I think it's important that she come to a meeting where we're all here, we're all talking to her, we're all getting to know her a little bit and, and the community as well is, is seeing her in that function. And, and again, it doesn't have to be every town meeting, but I think right now for the first run, it's probably a good, good time to bring her to a meeting.
I think that's a great point and something really the board should be doing before every meeting. Every town meeting. Yeah. Thank you, Diane. I think that's great.
So we'll also do our regular, you know, pre-ten meeting TV show and all that too. So
Yes.
People and we have a conversation. So it, it's good. So people can learn what's, what's on the warrant and everything in advance if they want to watch the stimulating conversation about the pre-ten meeting. So that's what we've been doing now for six, six years, five, six years. And it's usually a helpful feature. So if there's nothing else, is there anything else on the warrant? If not, I'll, I'll go into my update quickly.
Yeah, go for it.
The, so I have a couple of public works updates for you. One that's on the janitorium, one that kind of supplements it. So I just want to give you an update on the, the, as you know, there's been a lot of gas main work in town, right? And the three big streets that have gotten a lot of work recently, Beach Street, Sawyer Street and Jerusalem Road between the Causeway and up to just past Holly Hill Farm. So the good news is that Brian Joyce, our Public Works Director, has negotiated a three hundred ninety-five thousand dollar payment for National Grid. So we can do the curb to curb repayment. National Grid does not historically do curb to curb. So we've negotiated this amount of money that will pay for us to manage the curb to curb to our standards and look at that. So Beach Street and the piece of Jerusalem Road, I said, between the Causeway and then on, up past Holly Hill, that the plan is to do it this fall, either later this month or early November, depending on how weather and scheduling work. And then Sawyer Street will be next year. That's the plan. So that's good news on those roads. Also, Beachwood, I know if everyone has seen that all the, all the gas main work that had been done twenty-eight, right? So, or Hull Street or Howard's referred to in various places in Hangum. So you see that Hangum finally got the repaving done on, on the first part that connects Cohasset. The, 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 it actually was a lot of gas. So Beachwood Street is the next round. So they've started work on a stretch between King Street and Bound Brook Lane. That, that could go on for as long as six weeks. So there'll be delays of one lane traffic and stuff from time to time. At the same time, the town is going to be doing summer paving on the Beachwood Bound Brook piece, just over Bound Brook, repaving some of that and then Mill Lane. So that'll be done also over the, in the next couple of weeks. So that'll be a little quicker in and out. So and then the, the, the beach would work, will hopefully be done sooner, but I can't promise with National Grid. So that work, they're laying more gas. And hopefully it'll work out a similar deal with them, but then we won't be able to do any work on Beachwood until next year either way. So usually need to have at least a, a winter settling so that settle, it settles in. So that's the public works update and that's what I have.
Great. Yeah. Such New England problems with timing all of the road work around our seasons. All right. Thank you, Chris. I will go first for select board comments. Just an announcement, next Thursday, October fourteenth at seven PM, the Cohasset Pride Project is doing a coming out coffee house at, under the tent behind the library. And it's a community gathering honoring National Coming Out Day and all of you are invited. Everyone in town's invited. I think it's a really great way to celebrate all LGBTQIA plus identifying members of our community and all allies and family, and everyone is invited to that. So they asked that I would share that info about that. And otherwise, just want to say, go Red Sox. I'll let the Yankees fan go next since he's going to lose tonight.
Wow, that's cold. Just quick update, a couple of weeks ago, I've just brought up a couple of issues with that AEC was having procedural stuff and whatnot. There's been some really nice forward progress. National Grid has been a very productive and, and very open partner, including with the transformer upgrade down in Norwell, but also just with this brick grant. So pleasant, you know, very good news on that front that, you know, I know we've had some discussions about some frustrations, but there seems to be a very tangible change in now that we've got a, you know, a collaborative relationship. And that's really exciting for all the reasons we had above. And that's kind of for me, I'll say go Yankees, but you know, not too loudly.
Clearly not an election year.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
One of the biggest Red Sox hat on next year, right?
Jean, go ahead.
Well, I, I want to thank and commend our police and neighboring police forces for assisting us in this horrible and disturbing hoax. You know, I, I'm not sure if many people know, I know some of us know, but we have police personnel with superior computer science skills, which I think really paid off in this particular incident. So we are very lucky to live in Cohasset. So I want to put that out there. Second, I wanted to thank our new Assistant Regional Recreation Director. I have a frequent user of the Teen Rec Center in my own house and she is enjoying it. And I know that there's lots of kids going down there. And so it's really starting to, you know, pay off in terms of all the renovations. So thank you, town, for funding that and getting that up and going. So that's great.
Great. I'm glad she's liking using it. All right, Diane.
I, I have nothing except I, I, to Jean's comment at the last, I think it was our last meeting, just if we could do sort of a run through on our select board goals at some point soon. And I would love to have somebody from the Assistant Rec Director or something kind of give us an update on, on the use of, of the teen center or whatever the official title is. I'm so excited for that. So just would be very curious about its usage.
That's a great point.
Sounds like we have a success on our hands.
I'm making a note of that too, right?
And that's it. Go Sox.
All right. Let's see. All right. Last thing on the agenda, approval of minutes from September seventh and twenty first.
I, I just, I would like to request that we put off approval of the minutes from the September twenty first meeting. There were a couple of dangling sentences that I asked Tracy to, to clean up a little bit. So when I was reviewing them, so if we could push those off, but otherwise I'll move the meeting minutes for September seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, starting with Cory.
Ray Evans, aye.
She nearly dippled out.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. And thank you for paying attention to some of that grammar, Diane. I appreciate that. All right. We don't have any topics reasonably anticipated and we can make a motion to adjourn and go watch the game.
Move to adjourn.
You have a second. All right, roll call.
Aye.
She nearly dippled out.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. Go Red Sox. Great. Good night, everybody. Good night, everyone.